Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the work session we're going to start off with on Tuesday, May 9th. Can I please have a motion to open the work session?
Motion to open the work session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, this is going to be a short one. Jill?
Very short.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we've got is administrative items for this evening. A claimant of claims, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the sanitary sewer main and water main improvements with the maintenance fund. This is for Chappaquaqua housing. Authorization to purchase bulbs. So this is reimbursement to the garden club for the beautiful tulips and daffodils that they planted in our pots. Authorization to attend a perma conference. Authorization to approve the 2023 youth officer agreement. Authorization to approve the annual ECI increase for the 2023 HVAC preventative maintenance agreement, and an authorization to lift the COVID vaccine requirements for body staff. Any questions from the board?
Any questions for anyone? Yeah, okay. All right. Well, then can I please have a motion to close the work session and open the public meeting?
Motion to close the work session and open the public meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so welcome, everybody. We are right on time, look at that, for our town board public meeting of Tuesday, May 9th. Before we get started, we'll go through any announcements, Jill?
No.
Okay. I had a few things. You can read mostly my supervisor's report for tomorrow, but I did want to just highlight that next week is Police Week, and we do support the wonderful police officers here in Newcastle. We will have these little ribbons in the lobby starting next week if you want to take them and hang them on your car or a tree or your house, just to show us a note of our wonderful officers. I really would appreciate that. Also, good bless you. Also, our farmer's market is opening this weekend, which is very exciting, back at the train station. So we're excited to have them there. That's this weekend, right? Yeah. Also, June 1st, we're going to be holding a rally against gun violence. It's the beginning of Where Orange is June 2nd to 4th. So we're starting having the rally on June 1st. It will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the gazebo. And June 3rd at noon is going to be our pride flag racing. So we encourage you to plan ahead so you can attend those events. And also, under our community corner, I want to wish a happy 7th birthday to Willow and Grace in Santiago, and a happy 10th birthday to Dart Isakaj. So happy birthday, and we're happy to celebrate with you in town. All right, anything from the administrative report? Nothing. Okay. So we are going to move right on to public comment, new business. Now, if you're here for the public hearing on 50 North Greeley, this is not that. We're going to have plenty of time for that. But if there's any other public comment or new business, we're happy to entertain that from anyone here. Raise your hand. All right, is there anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Okay. Perfect. All right, well, oh.
Sorry. I just wanted, this is a-
John, just state your name.
My name is John Ehrlich. I do live in the wonderful, wonderful Hamlet of Chappaquaqua, New York, closely affiliated with Millwood. I wanted to do a couple of things. One of the things I wanted to do was to thank you all for how much you have gotten done as human beings and also as legislators. So often in life, people tell you what you can't do. But the people that get it done are very, very special. We've got a functioning performing arts center, which eventually we're going to make it even more functional. We've got an enormous amount of work that was done on roads and on infrastructure around town. Want to thank somebody from the highway department or the building department when you see them working. I think they appreciate that. So this comment was nothing new, but it's a big thank you to all that the town and the town offices are doing. I also want, and we don't like to pay the taxes, but they did one heck of a job making sure it was done, gave everybody an extra day. I mean, just in the normal course of life, how much gets done in this town, we should focus on. Before we focus on the problems, let's share some gratitude for all that is good, and it's an enormous amount. Excuse me for talking so long.
Well, thanks, John. We're very lucky in town to have phenomenal town staff and volunteers and concerned citizens. So we're very lucky here. So thanks, John. All right, any other public comment, new business, or accolades? All right, so we are going to move now to the reason I think most of you are probably here. Our public hearing on 50 North Greeley and the North Greeley net zero carbon legislation. So can I have a motion from the town board to open the public? No, I will. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor? All right.
Aye.
All right, before we get started, there were a couple of things that I wanted to just start with. So years ago, before I was elected, there was a timer where people could only talk for three minutes. I don't like the timer because I feel like if you have four minutes' worth of something to say, we want you to be able to say that. That being said, there are a lot of people here, so if you can all please be cognizant of the number of people here and the hour and allow everyone to be able to speak. If you have already sent in written comments, those are part of the record. You do not need to read them into the record again. We have put them into the record already. We also have note cards that I believe are back there. If you would like to speak, if you could please fill out a note card and give it to our lovely town administrator here, and she will call your name. Please put your name and address on those note cards and give that to Jill. And before we get started, I do want to say that first I want to thank everybody, both applicant and our residents, for showing up today. I think I speak on behalf of the entire town board when I say that we're glad that you're all here. And only with the engagement of concerned citizens can we come up with a great solution and great projects. So the town board is open to hearing everything. We have not made up our minds on anything. Certainly, this project still has a bit of a ways to go, and we want to hear from the applicant. And we fully believe that information that we're going to hear from residents are going to inform our decisions and/or changes that may be made to the project down the road. So we're happy you're all here. We're looking forward to hearing from everybody, and we want to thank the applicant as well for coming. And so I'd like to start this off with Ed. If you could just give us a brief history of where this project came from, where we're going, and still what needs to be done, because I think people are a little confused thinking that if this gets approved, then it's done, and without a planning board or architectural review board. So if you could just give that information, that would be wonderful.
I'd be happy to. So tonight may feel like the beginning, in a sense it is, of a public hearing process. But this process actually started back in June of last year, when the applicant team came and presented to the town board at that time. And that presentation is available online and can be watched. And at that time, the town board asked the applicant to do some community outreach, particularly to the folks that live at 149 King Street. And I understand that they did that last summer. And the applicant came back in September with a formal submission for his own change. At that point, September of last year. At that point, the proposed legislation was referred, as we're required to do, to the Newcastle Planning Board and the Westchester County Planning Board. You may remember having joint meetings with the planning board. We had two of those in January of this year. And then in February, the town board created a four-person working group to work through some of the issues with respect, open issues at that time, with respect to the legislation. Legislation itself has gone through multiple drafts, and it's been the subject of review from my office and town staff. The working group met in February, continued to work on these open issues with the legislation. I know the planning board has been meeting regularly and talking about the project. In terms of where we are tonight, the applicant is proceeding with a zoning petition to change the zoning applicable to its property. And it's not, at this time, proceeding with the actual application itself. The idea is that if the legislation is adopted, the applicant would come back with a more fulsome application, more details. But the board has right now is a concept plan. And it's a concept plan with a fair bit of detail, I think it's fair to say, but not all of the engineering work and architectural detail, site plan detail, that would be, that you would see with a full application. So that will come later if the legislation is adopted.
And both our planning board and our architectural review board would be very involved in that process?
Yeah, I guess it's also important to say that what the applicant is asking for in terms of the legislation is a special permit, or to create a new special permit and add it to the existing town code, which already has 18 existing special permits. This would be 19. And if that happened and this became a special permit that the applicant could come back and ask for, that application would be the subject of automatic referrals to the planning board and the architecture review board, just like every other, almost every other special permit application is in the town codes. There's a very well-established process with respect to all existing special permits, and we follow a very similar process with this one if this legislation is approved.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions? All right.
Well, let me just, you know, one more thought on this because it's important. The other thing that the town board is going to be doing as lead agency is reviewing the legislation for compliance with SECRE. And there, what the board is doing is looking at potential adverse environmental impacts that could be associated with approving this legislation, knowing that the legislation is associated with a project, is a concept plan, and we know what the applicant's proposing. So the other thing that the town board will be doing is looking at things like parking and traffic and visual impacts, and we have the model here tonight. And at the end of that process, the board needs to make what's called a determination of environmental significance. The board needs to ask itself whether the zoning and the concept, the project that's its intended to facilitate would result in one or more significant, environmental, adverse environmental impacts. And that's called a determination of environmental significance, and then it will come at the end of this process.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to start to open this up to public comment. The one thing I do just want to ask of everyone here is there may be differences of opinion. That is okay. We actually love well-reasoned debate and diversity of thought. The one thing I would ask is that we please make sure to be respectful of each other, both of the board, of the applicant, and of each other, because I think that's the way we work best as a town, where we can collaborate together in a respectful manner. So that being said, I think let's start with the applicant. Would you like to give us a presentation and talk to us about this lovely model?
Thank you for having us. My name is Jeffrey Davis. I'm part of the development team, along with the Feinberg family that owns the property. Don is actually on. So one thing, I think we've given this presentation a few times now, is when we started this project, we met with the town board, we met with the families that live at 149 King Street and the families that live in the houses across the street, as well as other members of the community, and started to get feedback of what they'd like to see at the property. And we've heard the gamut from how many stories, to how many parking spots, to what type of retail everybody would like to see. And after a lot of back and forth, and as you'll hear from the architects much better than you're going to hear from me, the constraints from the site, this is what we've designed to accommodate all of those different constraints and different ideas. And I know there'll be a lot of debate tonight over all of these different things, and you'll hear in a lot more detail from the architects of how we ended up with what we did in a lot more fluently than I will tell you. But some of the things that we did do in this site, just to give you some little tidbits, is we added more affordability than you would normally see. Normally it's 10%, which would have been about four units. We're doing four affordable units, one workforce housing unit if this is approved. We initially had a lot more retail in it. We scaled that back after some feedback. Now it'll be about 4,300 square feet of retail, with about 2,000 square feet of diner, with about 1,000 square feet of back of house, or some similar type concept of casual dining, but another 1,100 square feet of additional retail. We have 53 parking spots on site, 45 for the 45 apartments upstairs, four for the commercial, four for a car sharing concept to help alleviate the use of cars for the residents in the building. This is going to be a completely green building, something completely new, off the grid, net zero, which the architects are going to go into, not for me. Again, our unit sizes, out of those 45, you have three studios, 21 one bedrooms, 21 two bedrooms. And the unit sizes on that are set about 700 square feet for your ones, 1,400 square feet for your twos. These are meant to be units in a downtown area. We're next to a train station. You're on Main Street. This isn't your huge townhouse project. These are conservative-sized units. One other thing, as you're going to see in our presentation, we took our project and we set it back. We increased the size of the sidewalks. We increased the size of the area for seating outside on the street. We wanted to make this an area for people to come and sit and enjoy and activate downtown on this side of North Greeley. And really, some of the design features which you're going to notice with the architects are going to go into is we're up against train tracks. Our site tapers down. We had to build a buffer zone between the train tracks and ourselves. We had to create this area to get between all the different buildings, so there's no windows facing the train tracks. We built courtyards between each building, so you don't have this continuous street wall that you'd be looking at that's multiple levels. The street wall is 15 stories, 15 feet that goes across. So we tried to create something that's different than you would normally see. We didn't want a 400-foot site that was just this one big monolith. And that's not an easy thing to do when trying to create an apartment building on a site like this. It took months and months of different variations to get where we are. Not to mention, when you need to build something of this, you need circulation throughout your property. You need multiple staircases, elevators. All of that area takes up within your building, which they'll go into a lot more detail with, which gives you a lot of constraints in building a building of multiple stories, which you can't just do if you had a much smaller building. So when we get into the detail, I want everybody to pay a little bit of attention to what the constraints are in designing buildings of this nature on a site of this nature. So I'm going to leave it to the architects, because they're going to do it a lot better than I am. And please just give them the time to understand the project fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
So I'm Andrew Ruff. I'm a design director at Quare Against Architecture, working with Jeff and Don and the rest of the team to propose this design that you see in front of you and you'll see on the screen. That is in compliance with the legislation that's been drafted for the NGCR district.
You can raise that up a little bit if you want to, I know.
Let's just try that better.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a model here. We're happy to walk through that in more detail. We have some photos of it so everyone can see, especially on the screen, and that might be a little bit challenging. We have a series of slides that we walk through the design as shown here and as reflected in the legislation. And again, happy to take questions as we go through this. So of course, everyone's familiar with site. It is the current vacant right-hand site with service parking. And here it is from there. And so you can see that the ratio of parking to building, it's about 70% parking. It's approximately 88% impervious, and so it's a quite challenging site from stormwater protection, from urban heat island effect, not to mention aesthetics and the lightness of the town. And so this is a challenging existing condition that we're seeking to remedy with the development. As Jeff mentioned, one of the many things is to take what is a very challenging site from an urban perspective, from a pedestrian experience currently, and change that to an amenity for the town. And so one way that we're doing that is to, as you can see in the red and the yellow, is to wrap the building footprint with public-facing amenities and commercial spaces. And so trying to find ways where we can activate the streetfront along the west side of North Greeley. In addition, you can see towards the south, there are two large public courtyards. And so we are sort of seating public space back at grade. That will become part of the public square. All of that is in service of achieving the other really critical aspect of the site, which is accommodating a significant amount of parking. And given the geotechnical conditions on the site, the soil quality, the high water table, we cannot excavate to basement parking. And so all of the parking has to be accommodated at grade. And there is a significant amount of parking for this site. So we're showing 53 spaces, which Jeff mentioned is one to one for all the apartment units, as well as a number of shared and commercial spaces. And one of the challenges in introducing that area of parking in an urban site is that it is delterious to the pedestrian experience. And so what we've done here is we've simply wrapped that parking with amenities, commercial space, so that it is essentially invisible from the street, so that the vehicle experience is not the pedestrian experience. And that is a really key feature of how the site plan was conceived and how the rest of the building builds up from that space. As we go up, we have three levels of apartments. The orientation of apartments are dictated primarily by the geometry of the site and the location of the train tracks. And so along the train tracks, we can't build habitable spaces along those, where there are sole opportunities for natural light, for air coming from the west side of the site. So 430 feet of the site is effectively off-limits for residential. One alternative that we looked at, and we looked at many alternatives in the design process, was to maximize the furring along North Greeley and to create a continuous street wall. That raised a number of challenges that we weren't in favor of as designers. We don't think are appropriate for the residents of North Greeley or the residents of this building, in that it creates a very monolithic block along a portion of the street that does not have that urban character. It also reduces the opportunity for cross ventilation for public space. And so what we looked at and decided was creating these, such as four separate buildings perpendicular to North Greeley. And so the residents primarily have their windows facing out onto courtyards that are both at-grade and elevated above the first level. This creates a few advantages from the way out of the building. One is that it offers cross ventilation. It offers the sense of community and privacy. It also breaks down the scale of the building. And so when you look at the building, which we will look at in a minute in some perspectives, and you can see in the model, it really does read as four separate buildings facing out of the street. And the rear of the building, which is primarily a corridor connecting the four bars, receives back essentially as a background building that buffers the train tracks and the bus depot from the rest of downtown. As we go to the roof, the other unusual amenity of this building is that we are showing a fairly sculptural roof. We are aware that, and you can see it quite clearly in the model and in some of the renderings that we'll show in a minute, that this sits in a valley. And so not only is this building even considered from the pedestrian experience along North Greeley, but it needs to be considered for those residents who are sitting higher up on the sides, especially along North King, along King Street, looking out over the building. And so now, if you were to look at the commercial buildings today, you'd see, you know, a sea of rubber roofs. You'd see a lot of mechanical equipment. And that's sort of that fifth facade of the building we want to be considered. And so we're showing it as a series of sloping planes. It could be a combination of solar panels and plating roofs. And really thinking of it as a facade that deserves respect and attention because that will be viewed by members of the community. So here are a few images to help contextualize the existing conditions as well as the scale of the proposed building, again, in conformance with the NGCR legislation. So this is a view of downtown looking from the south. And so you'll look past the sea of parking, and you'll see the right-hand building there at the northern end. And this is the proposed building when you see from that perspective. And so, you know, not only do we think that the buildings that run perpendicular to North Greeley help to create a series of courtyards, this rhythm along the street, but it does echo the pattern of buildings elsewhere in town. Really, we're not looking to create a monolithic building. We're creating a series of buildings that speak to each other and speak to the context. Again, looking a bit closer, before and after. So you can see the green roof is really becoming a fifth facade of this project. And then as we move to the north, currently looking down south towards North Greeley. And this is the proposed building, and its certification. And so, you know, this scale, these are all drone photographs from June. So this is fairly accurate, fairly recent imagery. The model, oh, sorry about that.
That's me. I asked her to make you a little louder, I'm sorry.
The microphone up taller.
Okay.
And then that should help.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
So hopefully the physical model helps to contextualize the scale of this again for someone who have challenges in viewing the rendering relative to existing context. And we also have an animation that we can play separately that shows transit around the building, hoping, you know, as best as possible without building it first, to give everyone a sense of what this scale really does look like, because it might be challenging to imagine, especially on the side of this length, what that might look and feel like. So one of the other recurring topics that we discuss with the town and with the community is a question about height. And one of the things that we've tried to show, both in the renderings, the visualizations, is that, again, taking a slightly broader view of the site, it does sit in a valley. And to see it relative to, you know, not just its immediate surroundings or the neighbors, but to look at it in the context of Chappaquaqua. And so this is a view of the site, you know, as an aerial view as exists today with the proposed building in place. And this is if you basically take a plane, horizontal plane, and move it 55 feet up from the site. So the entire building is less than 55 feet tall, as currently proposed and as reflected in the legislation. And you can see what else in town at that kind of absolute elevation is beginning to sit proxy to. And so as that kind of high tide mark moves down, you begin to see what other buildings in town are sharing the same kind of absolute height as what this proposed height means. And so the Hunts Place structure to the south is on a bit of a rise. You have the King Street townhome is beginning to percolate up above that line. And then at 40 feet, or 45 feet, so this is the height where since the entire roof of the proposed building would be exposed, and you can see contextually how many other buildings procted to this are sharing that same absolute elevation. We're also conscious of the, you know, the conversations about, you know, how does this impact the experience of the street itself? And so this is a series of drawings that we prepared for the planning board that they, I believe, found helpful. So this is the elevation, the east elevation along North Greeley. So you can clearly see the four primary buildings, and then receiving in the back the volumes that are connecting them, essentially blocking the railroad tracks. And the absolute max height of this project is at 54 feet 10 inches. And so that is inclusive of mechanical space, that's inclusive of elevator overrides, stair cores, roof access. So all the things that, if you look at a conventional building, are protrusions above a flat roof. And so we've been able to encapsulate all those, the, let's say, more sculptural roof, and keep our height to 54 feet, which is accommodating a commercial grade ground floor, is accommodating the park in at grade, which has higher floor ceiling requirements, and it is accommodating the four-layer, or the three layers of apartments and the ancillary overruns. And then if you look at an actual profile of the building as it- And then if you look at an actual profile of the building as it comes across the street, again, it is, the massing of it is designed to create such as four buildings above a approximately 15-foot activated space. And so that activated space at 15 feet is plantings, commercial space, amenities for residents. And above that, in those courtyards, are also plantings that would be visible not only from the street but from the surrounding neighbors. And then if you look higher, you know, not only do we have points below 54 feet, but we've taken advantage of the tapering roofs to kind of dramatically bring down the height at slack points, especially where it intersects with North Greeley. And so all of those kind of back-up house spaces, elevators, stairs, mechanical spaces, are pushed to the back as far as we can for North Greeley so that we have at the street level as optimal as reduced building height as we can afford with the requirements of building codes, you know, market rate requirements for floor-to-floor heights, et cetera. And then if you look at the average of it, you know, across that whole bar, you know, it's just under 38 feet. And so this is one of the, again, I know we'll have this discussion, you know, what is it relative to the context? And I think what, you know, the alternative that we looked at early on would be, you know, could we squeeze a building in at the street level that is monolithic and creating a ingenious street wall? And that would be producing something akin to this with additional protrusions down there. It is a, not only challenging from pedestrian experience, it's challenging to meet standard building codes. And so this is, you know, our solution kind of breaks that really rigid down and produces a building that we feel is more varied and will be experienceably beneficial to the town. Pause right there for a minute, unintentionally. Lovely, all right. And so this is a section through one of those corridors. And so this is describing how we're achieving those setbacks. So what you're looking at is on the lower level, the parking depth, which is, that is a New York State regulated geometry. You know, you have 18-foot deep stalls, you have 24 feet between them, and you have the 18-foot deep stall. So that, that area is a really constrained bulk of geometry that is, you know, no matter what development came in here would be restricted by any of those geometries. Where it comes to the street, we've taken every bench to, even in this very thin space, this is to the bicycle parking area, to activate that streetfront. And so, so that the experience of the pedestrians of the town is not looking into headlights, is not looking into exhaust, it's looking into a building that is active, that is contributing something meaningful to town. So above that, we have a plating courtyard, which the residents want to have access to. And that would be obviously visible as you rise the hill. On the left, you can see three apartments stacked, looking out to the east over North Greeley. And then you have a corridor. And that corridor is, again, that's what's separating the building from the Metro North Line. And you can see quite clearly here how elevated that line is relative to the site. So it's actually looking into the second floor windows. So it's a, not only is it from a code requirement very intrusive, it is spatially a very intrusive element to have on this site. And we feel that, you know, by buffering not only the residents of this site, but potentially the rest of the residents along North Greeley from the train, from the immediacy of that train, that it might be doing some of that benefit. And so we have a series of visualizations looking at, again, the proposed design, which is reflected in this model. So this is a view from the southeast. And you can see such as activating that space between Susan Lawrence and and the commercial space at the ground level of the building. And then the four individual building volumes marching along towards the north. This is on the sidewalk of the site, looking south, and so Susan Lawrence is just past the end volume there. And I think this shows fairly clearly how the expanding that public space at the ground level can create opportunities for the general public. These wouldn't be enclosed spaces, only available to patrons of the restaurants or only to people visiting retail spaces or to residents themselves. These are truly part of the public realm and would be activated accessible spaces to the public. For the residents, you know, simply relief from the street noise, relief from the train tracks, you have these east-facing courtyards looking out over the hillside to the east. These will be planted. And to the earlier conversation about, you know, how is this building improving existing conditions? One key strategy here is we are looking at every way within the building itself to make it absorb stormwater. And so this is acting much more as a sponge as opposed to existing conditions, which is sheeting off water. And so it is that we are retaining, we are holding stormwater in high ratings and then slowly releasing it back out to the stormwater system. And so really trying to find every way this building can be a positive asset to the larger context of the town. And finally, a slightly elevated view, and you can see more clearly the courtyards, the green roofs. And I think what we found most interesting looking at the existing context is that when you, when you create the horizon of this building in this location, it really does emphasize the hillside to the west next to Solomon Parkway by obscuring the train and the bus depot, which otherwise become your foreground. And so, you know, creating this new foreground for pedestrians and for the residents of the neighborhood community, we think this will elevate the view to the west. For those joining on Zoom, we have some images of the model. And I think this is probably as good as we can do for now, but we can share more if there are any particular questions. I'll go through these quickly, but I imagine folks in the room might be able to come up and look at it more closely. So this is a very similar vantage point, again, to the view we had, that was a rendered view. And so the, just for reference, the photography is all from New York State GIS data. And then we had a team went out and field measured every single building in downtown. So this is as accurate as we can get to representing the existing context and how the building can fit into it. We have lots of data on specific takeoffs, which I'm happy to dive into more detail. I think the critical metrics that would be of interest to the town perhaps is looking at the, so we're proposing reducing the impervious coverage to 80% down to 65%. Our maximum height is 55 feet above grade. Probably worth noting, the frontage along North Greeley is 417 feet. So that would be the, kind of, in our mind, the worst-case street wall condition. And so by breaking up, our longest street wall is 110 feet. And that's as defined by building area within 10 feet of the sidewalk. And so the individual bars of the building are only 55 feet wide. And so, you know, we're kind of giving a fairly generous description when we say 110 feet. But really, it's 55 feet wide for each of the volumes and 40-foot wide corridors. As Jeff mentioned, we have 45 residential units proposed, three bedrooms, 21 one-bedrooms and 21 two-bedrooms with approximately 4,300 square feet of commercial space at grade, which could be sublimated in any number of ways. Happy to return to this if there are any questions on the technical data. And then just real quickly, to describe a bit about the way in which we propose to build this building. And so this is, the proposal is not only at zero, as Jeff described, which means that we would be either producing all electricity for the building on-site, primarily through solar panels, or we'd be purchasing renewable electricity for the remainder of the building use. One of the important things it does is it reduces the operational carbon of the building. And so we, you know, as the design team, we are incentivized and required to reduce the, sort of, the cost of operating this building. And so that goes to making the heating systems very efficient, the cooling systems very efficient, even the hot water. You're really looking systemically across the whole building performance and finding ways to reduce the operating energy impacts. And according to that, we're also looking at ways to reduce the embodied or the construction impacts. And so the primary way we're achieving that, we would be achieving that, is the use of master construction. And so this is something that our office has quite a good experience in, in the Northeast. This is a project under construction right now in New Haven. This is a two-story building that's being constructed over a three-story on reinforced structure. The benefits of this, for this project are several. One, it is a very quiet process. And so if anyone's been to a large construction site in the city, you know that you have a significant amount of vehicular traffic, equipment noise, congestion, road blockage, with material deliveries, labors. This is a very different animal. So these are prefabricated monolithic timber panels that are up to 11 feet wide by 55 feet long. They are typically pre-cut in the factory. They're primed on the back of a flatbed. You can see on the left, they're laid down on-site and a crane lifts them into place. So your entire construction crew for the primary structure is a crane operator and four to five carpenters, four to five carpenters. And then the noises here are the cranes and screw guns. And so this is a really, you know, not even to mention the fact that the timber is storing carbon for the life of the building. So the material is very advantageous for a larger environmental context. And then the method of construction itself is very advantageous for those in town who are living through a construction process. This is a very different thing than going through a steel and concrete building. This is another project under construction. This is multifamily housing, approximately the same scale, again, in New Haven. This one's under construction right now in a very similar setup. And you can see from the aerial view, you know, a lot of similarities. No train tracks in this one. But it's, it's all the construction laydown space, all of the materials are contained on-site. In this particular case, we have a crew of seven carpenters, and we have one crane in the backhoe. And this is producing a building that's about 86,000 square feet. The construction process for, you know, a building like this is measured in weeks for the superstructure, not years. Again, they're coming off the truck, they're lifted into place, you're putting anywhere between 10 and 20 panels a day. So conceptually, you can kind of see the pattern of apartments beginning to arise. You're putting up an apartment every few hours. And so from a disturbance perspective, we've, especially for a site which doesn't have much excess space, we've found, we find this is going to be a very advantageous approach for everyone involved. And then the result of the interiors, objectively, we think are beautiful. And so you're, you're getting for the residents, you know, something that is exposed natural materials that are biophilic, that were, you know, produce halon trades, that produce paint and other noxious chemicals that can be introduced into the buildings. So you're building a very healthy building environmentally and for the residents themselves. So as a durable investment, you know, we feel that this approach is something that would be very appropriate for the town. And it does give a sense of what those interiors might feel like. This is a, this is a project in Portland, not in Chappaqua. And then even to the material and interiors, you know, this is, again, this is a lot of detail for what we're talking about in terms of legislation. But conceptually, what we're looking at is something that is both respectful to the town context in terms of using some of the same tone and texture of the masonry cladding that's already in town and then coupling that with bio-based renewable materials in the facility and the exposed hydrostructure. And so you're wedding ecologically sensitive construction with contextually appropriate materiality. So that's the end of our initial talk. We can present more? Any questions from the board? Or Jeff, if you'd like to order that?
Before you leave, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What was the thought process with how kind of traffic was going to circulate in and out of the site? Like, we saw where the parking is, but in terms of deliveries, in terms of people coming in and out, what was the thought process around that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the most valuable part of the site from an urban perspective is the south. It's the closest to the primary intersection in town, it's the closest to the train station. And so the goal was to, at the south end, load that with the commercial space, the primary resident entry, potentially a diner, courtyards. And then towards the northern end of the site, where we're both geometrically challenged and further distant from the main intersection, that would be more of a service end. And so the, the entry into parking structure is at the northern end of the building. And it's only a single cut into the curb. It's a 24-foot wide single cut into the, into the parking deck.
And that's enough for cars to come in and out?
Yes.
Is it also tall enough for deliveries to be in?
Yes, yes. So one of the driving factors on the massing of the building is that at grade, you need a 15-foot floor-to-floor height for level one. And that's basically market requirements for commercial spaces. If you go lower than that, it's really hard to find a tenant, especially if you need a tenant that had a diner or a restaurant or any kind of use that required a commercial kitchen. Because when you're adding a commercial kitchen, you have code-required exhaust, you have fire suppression, you're basically adding things that further reduce the ceiling height. And so that sets the ground floor height. And within that, we have ample space for vehicular parking as well as larger height, whether it's emergency access vehicles or delivery vehicles.
What's the floor-to-floor height after the ground level?
10 feet.
I have a question about the model. So we went through a lot of back and forth regarding this model, right? And it's great to have the physical model, but we, we also had some back and forth about the augmented reality model.
Yeah, we have that.
So and that's what you showed.
Would you like us to see it now? No, I haven't shown it yet.
Oh, you haven't shown, okay, okay, good, all right.
So I apologize for those on Zoom. This is going to be very laggy. We can upload this virtually, so it's a bit smoother.
Put this on the website.
Yeah, put it on the website. If anyone wants to look on the computer, it's very clear up here. Unfortunately, the Zoom process makes this challenging. But we have essentially a three-dimensional animated view rotating around the site to show the pedestrian experience along North Greeley and to show, again, how this fits with the larger context.
And this is to scale?
This is all to scale, yeah, absolutely. And so this will be, this along with the entire presentation PDF, I imagine will be available on the town website. Also have it on my computer for those fortunate enough to be in rooms to look at. Again, I apologize for the lagging on those on Zoom. Pause it there, maybe you have a non-nauseating sense of the...
Can you play that one more time?
I can. Do you want to stop it through that lagging? It's a lot better on the screen.
So this is going to be coming from the north and going south.
That's correct.
So that's where the entrance to the garages?
No, no, the entrance is on the west side. Yeah, on the south side is entirely pedestrian. So the muse between the south end of the building and Susan Lawrence is that entire depth of the site is hard-stated for the residents to enter the building and help pull it up.
So can you do it from the opposite direction?
I cannot. That is a static animation that I can't change. We can make as many as you want.
That was specifically what I had asked for, you know, coming from the less dense areas as you approach the higher density of the project.
That's what they just showed, as we were trying to show.
No, you just showed it the opposite way. You just showed it from North Greeley going south.
Which is from the lower density to the higher density.
Well, you know, I'm assuming the project is built so we're going from the lower, the lower heights, the lower
No.
ceiling heights to the higher.
No, no, the, the, the heights are obviously similar. We pulled the elevation to.
I, I'm talking about the rest of the town.
The, the property of Longworth Greeley, that section is basically flat. I'm not sure, if, if there's a different view sequence that you'd like, we can, we can absolutely set that up.
Perhaps you can also do one from coming down the hill and making the right onto North Greeley and showing it that way.
Sure, that, that's all we're sure, but we can absolutely do that, that's fine.
Yes, I wanted to see it from walking next to the shorter buildings going up to this higher elevation of building height, so, yeah.
We can definitely set that up, that's not a problem.
Great.
All right, any other questions from the board right now before we open it up to public comment? Or end to the applicant if anything else to read? Okay. Is Don on? Was there anything you wanted to say? I'll put you on the spot. I don't know if he's on.
He's just listening.
Okay. Oh, there he is.
His hands are raised.
Carrie, can we pull Donald Feinberg on?
Oh. He just says to unmute himself.
There he is. Don, just unmute yourself.
Did just unmute myself.
Okay, we hear you.
I know, I said thank you for asking Lisa, but I think they've done a great job. Andrew's done a great job, obviously. I see Alan Rogansky there, you know, this is a really top-notch firm. They, they are professors at Yale, they're internationally known, they just got back from Bhutan. And they came back just for this meeting, Lisa.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right, so then if, there's nothing, I have to just say, this is totally personal, but if you see me on my phone, my son is flying to Africa right now and he's navigating the airport, switching terminals. So I might have to answer him every once in a while, but, but I'm listening. And we, what we would like to do now is open this up really for public comment. So if you do, again, just a reminder, if you, if you have a public comment, if you can pass them down, if you can fill out a card, what we would ask also is we're going to try to hear from everybody first before you come back your second time if necessary. All right, so first we are going to hear from Mike Weinberg.
Hello, everyone. Mike Weinberg, Millwood. I, I came out today to generally support the project, but I did want to make a quick comment about the process. I have, have always had an issue with spot zoning, and that's what this is. And I think we should have looked at organically all of North Greeley first and then got to this. But here's where we are, so I generally like this project, I think it's a good idea. I am not concerned with the additional parking. I think Article L to Article has given people plenty of reason why they're not driving. I think people are thinking about it from perspective of people closer to my age, which was different. And I think the people who are going to live here are going to understand they're only going to have one unit, one spot. They, that's why you do this by train stations and mass transit, is so you don't need the cars. And we have a parking lot only a couple of blocks away. If someone wants a second car, they can put it in our training parking lot. There's no reason why they couldn't. We have plenty of spots certainly at night. So I, I think that's a total non-issue. And I think it's a good idea not to put that much parking there. And get people out of the cars and start using trains. You answered one of my questions, which why wasn't it sold on the, on the roof? But it sounds like it's going to be both, so that's great. Oh, I need to say that I am speaking only for myself. People sometimes infer other things. I am speaking only for myself, Mike Weinberg. Need to make that clear. And my last comment was, yeah, I'm actually familiar with some of what you're doing with the mass timber. I have a couple of clients in the Midwest that use modular building, which is very similar, but they have even more of that. So it, it's a great idea, it works really well, it goes up a lot faster. And my clients, clients are really happy when that gets done and it's a lot quieter and much more efficient. So that's my comments and I appreciate you guys all taking the time. And I think this would be a great addition to our downtown. And I look forward to something besides the ice sore we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Cynthia Seamus.
Hi, everybody. So I want to say first of all, thank you so much for all this great information. This is, I can't wait to really look at this thing also. I do want something built on the site for many reasons. The current building that's there, you know, we all probably agree that it's not the best looking thing. It's been vacant for a long time now and I'm concerned that it's a hazard. It could be attracting, you know, wildlife and rats and stuff. I'm concerned that it might be posing a hazard for our first responders as well. If, you know, God forbid, there was any sort of disaster there, a fire or anything, going into an uninhabited, uninhabited building is very dangerous for first responders. Additionally, we currently have a big empty parking lot that's no longer accessible to the public, which it previously was. And I assume that's probably because of the liability that that's the case. So, you know, it's, it's ugly, it's wasted space, it's taking away from the potential vibrancy and appeal and walkability of our, our downtown. The other reasons that I'd like to see something there are, like I said, vibrancy is sort of lacking in the downtown. The fact that it is twelve percent affordable housing is a step in the right direction as far as providing places for people to live that is more diverse than, than our current housing stock. And I think many of us would agree that that's, that's needed here. You know, both the Kupola building and the Conifer building were completely filled to capacity and have a waiting list and have since day one. There is a need for people to live here in different types of housing. The building, as we've heard, is going to be constructed and then operated in a very clean way, which is in line with Chapewa's, Newcastle's stated objectives to be a green city, a green town. And as far as size, others, you know, we've seen a lot of information tonight and some of these like flying around things. But one of the things that really struck me is when I wanted to look at this model is because especially when I'm sitting back there, for instance, and now that I'm standing right in front of it, you can clearly see that there are a number of buildings that are physically higher than the highest roof height. So I think that that sort of negates a lot of the, some of the concerns that people have had that this is like some sort of gigantic, you know, thing. So for all of these reasons, I really support this moving forward. That said, I do have one concern, which I really have yet to see addressed in a, a really satisfactory manner for me personally. And Lisa, you've sort of touched on this already. There's been a lot of conversation about parking for the actual residents. But my concern here is that North Greeley is a very narrow street. And already, just today, it's sometimes hard to get through there. And I'm trying to figure out where all these people who don't have cars or don't have more than one car, when, when they're getting their Amazon deliveries and they're getting their seamless deliveries and they're getting their Instacart deliveries and they're having Uber come and pick them up, where are those vehicles going to go? Because if they're in the street in front of these buildings, they're blocking traffic. And already today, we're driving around town and I don't know about you, but every single day I have to swerve around an Amazon driver who's parked in the middle of Bedford Road or Quaker Road or King Street or wherever they like to stick their truck. And that's going to happen here too. I don't see any, I, I don't see any allowance given for those very, very foreseeable things. Like obviously these people are going to get deliveries or going to have ride share services or whatever. Where are those vehicles going to go? They can't go in the driveway, in the parking garage and then turn around easily, I don't think. That is my big concern with this project. If that can be addressed satisfactorily so that it's not inconvenient and or hazardous for the rest of the community. And I want to remind everybody that CBAC is right here. And that means our ambulances often have to come down this street. And if they're doing that around an Amazon truck, that's a problem. And that could be life or death for someone. So I would really love for that to be addressed somehow, whether it is maybe scaling back some of these awesome outdoor spaces or whatever needs to happen to have some sort of like a, I don't know, turnaround, whatever, not an architect. But that, that I feel strongly needs to be addressed. Otherwise, I think it's fantastic. I would love to see something there and I think this is creative and beautiful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Jen Klein.
Thank you so much for that comprehensive presentation. I really appreciated it. I agree with the project. I, I really love it. I think there's a lot of thoughtfulness that went into all aspects. I am bothered by the idea of spot zoning. I think it's not great in terms of other landowners and properties in town. It's good to be broader than just one area. Also, it would allow for more balance for the town. I mean, obviously there are other structures in town that are a similar height, but I, I think it is important not just to do a piece of all the spot zoning. Questions that I might have for you all is about the durability and longevity of the materials. I love the simplicity of the construction and the low impact, but can you tell us more about the longevity of it? How long do they last? Love the hidden parking, love how it's net zero, rainwater management. And most importantly, the type of housing that it offers for our community is a huge plus. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, do you have an answer as to the longevity of, of those building materials?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so a mass timber panel, at least the presentation we would use here, would range between, again, a quite large area and between four and twelve inches in thickness. And so a single panel weighs thousands of pounds. So there's the sheer mass of it. And in terms of building performance, that's really advantageous because it's, it provides basically, the material itself is an insulator. And so you're, you're using the massive material to enhance the building. In terms of variability, back in twenty sixteen, our office designed and constructed a high school in, in New Haven for low-income students that's an alternate agricultural school. And it is exposed mass timber throughout. And so if you look at, what's, what's the highest abuse factor you could get at a high school? It's probably up there. And it's performed fantastically. It's, it's a really durable material. It's, you know, it's inherently an industrial material that happens to be beautiful. And so, you know, it's never exposed to the exterior and, you know, the, the structure itself is, it's wrapped with weather barriers, insulation and cladding. And so you're not talking about something that's sitting out in the rain, in the weather. And structurally, it lasts as long as any building will last and probably longer than some, we can get into that. It's a longer conversation, but it is a very robust material. To the point that the Department of Defense is now using these to build military bases, even in the northeast. Because not only is it an incredibly durable material, it's also blast resistant. Hopefully, that's never a feature that Chapewa has to see, but it is very robust, is the short answer, yeah.
All right, thank you. Next is Norman Hirsch.
Well, I pretty much support.
You can angle that down if you want, yeah.
I don't want to repeat everything that everybody said, but I would like to say that I generally support the project. I'm at one forty-nine King Street. And I know we have some neighbors that agree with me and there are some that would rather prefer a smaller structure. But I think they've done a good job with making this four-story building not look overly imposing and fitting in with the community. One comment was made about access for deliveries, perhaps a couple of spots right in front could be zoned for five-minute parking or something like that. So that it would be someplace for your PS truck to stop. And I, I certainly believe that if we want to support the stores and vibrance of our downtown, that we do need additional residents in downtown. And that's one of the reasons I support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Maggie Christ.
Hi. Hi. I live at forty-eight Prospect Drive, which my house is walking distance to downtown. And then in the winter, I can see the bridge over the train tracks. I mention this because a knee-jerk reaction might be to assume that I'm a NIMBY, as in please don't build in my backyard. I understand that today's public hearing is about proposed legislation creating a small and specific zone within the Chapewa hamlet, the North Greeley Net Zero Carbon Legislation. If passed, the zone would allow for an ecologically correct new apartment building to be built on the site of the defunct Rite Aid store. The Rite Aid store's been empty for years and it, together with its overgrown parking lot, is an ice sore. Its owner is willing to invest time and money creating a building that is forward-thinking and handsome. It'll be an excellent addition to our downtown. The design is innovative and modern, bold and interesting because it's a fairly long street facade. It helps unhodgepodge that section of town by offering a swath of consistency. I love that it's green and sustainable and I'm particularly intrigued by the green roof. It was smart to put the apartment hallways on the back wall adjacent to the train tracks so that no apartments look over the tracks and have to suffer from inoperable windows. The varied massing and articulation along the street front, which makes it seem smaller than it really is, and it's a creative use of an awkward plot. I'm in support of this proposal, even if it does require spot zoning. In short, YIMBY, yes, in my backyard.
Thank you, Maggie. Maggie just brought up a question I had. What is the maintenance of the green roof?
Hi, thank you. I'm Alan Rogansky. I've been, I was here a few months back. I'm principal of Great Organistic Architecture and colleagues with Andy and happy to hear. To answer your question, there are many kinds of green roofs of different soil depths. And the contemporary green roofs are planted over root barriers and different layers of drainage mats and also water storage systems in a very compressed layer. And so the idea is that you set the soil depths for the kinds of planting that can survive. And we're focused on native, low-maintenance planting. So in the courtyards where there might be some maintenance, we might have a deeper, what's called an intensive garden roof, where there might be deeper soils so that the soils can be amended and different trees can be planted. Again, with the same system of water reservoir to keep the moisture under the plants with root barriers to prevent the roots of the, of the plants to attack roof membranes. So it's a very durable system. On the upper roofs, where we don't want to send a bunch of people all the time to do roof maintenance, we plant what are called extensive plants. So these are water, plants that really can be starved of water. There's still water storage for them, but, but things like sedums, which you may see around rocket croppings in your, in your gardens or, or in areas where there's not so much water, which are essentially water-absorbing, they, they capture condensation. So you don't have to mow, it can never grow tall enough to, to actually have to be cut. And it maintains a really consistent thickness. And so what we do is working with horticulturists who look carefully at soil type and exposure and rainfall quantities. We specify plants that we know can just essentially exist as if they were in wild.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Do these roofs typically look brown or do they stay green through winter?
Well, they, it depends what the plants are. Sometimes they'll flower, like wildflowers, sometimes they're just green. There's some evergreen, low, low-impact evergreens, they'll stay green, but they change with the seasons too.
They can blend still.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And what we've seen is that in planted roofs, often some taller plants may start to grow and then they just die back. And there's always a sort of like level understory. and then they just die back, and there's always a sort of like level understory. And occasionally, we introduce irrigation, and then you have a hayfield on top of the roof. So it's a very productive kind of soil system.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next, uh, speaker is John Priscantelli.
Oh, thank you, and I wanna thank the architectural crew here and that, they met with us previously, I live at one forty-nine also, unit ten, and it really impacts me. Um, basically, I'll be looking at that building, okay, from the back of my unit. And I think it's a great, a great concept, I mean, I think you folks have done a great job. Um, and I'm all for it for the first three units, I was thinking about this. I'm all for it for unit one, two, and three, but if you look at the, at the N unit, again, I'm staring at-
On the north side?
Yes, the northernmost unit. I'm staring at it, staring at somebody's window, so if there's any way that can be reconfigured to be three levels, the other four, and maybe even take out the commercial space, because I don't think the commercial space is gonna work, personally. I don't see, I see up on top, up on, up on, on Route one seventeen, I don't see a lot of activity in that new building as far as the commercial space goes. I don't know if it's gonna work down here. So again, I think it's a great concept here, but if you took out the commercial space, converted the northernmost building to three levels instead of four, I think that would really make a lot of the unit owners at one forty-nine happy, me included, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Maureen Malarky.
Thank you, I I actually didn't come to talk, but, um, I really just came to ask a question. I'm sitting here listening to a a very slick, um, presentation, a slick sales pitch for the the cheering of development, and 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 all of this, I don't understand, but the effect of all of this is on the tap space. Um, a lot of this talk about, uh, structural materials and rooftop, rooftop, uh, greenery, these are all red herrings away from me. Essential point is, what is this gonna cost the town? Um, this all strikes me in in some ways as as simply a a more sophisticated, green version of of neighborhood busting. The town didn't ask for this, um, and I wanna know what it's gonna cost me, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all right, I think this says Gerald Watson.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, wha- what we're doing today is, 'cause I don't have the answers to everything, I'm sorry, one second, is we're we're listening to all the questions and the comments, I'm actually writing them down, and these are things that we will be able to address. This is really the board being able to hear from you and then to be able to get answers to those questions and or to, you know, change the pro- the prospective proposal to to, um, you know, meet some of the the thoughts of residents. So it's not that you're never gonna get an answer, it's just that I can't necessarily give you an answer, and this isn't the 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 point of this, is really for us to hear from you right now and then to be able to get that information. So I've actually written down your question, and we will be making sure to address all of the issues that come up. Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, my name's Gerald Watson, I lived in Chappaqua for thirty-six years. I came principally, I thought, to object to the height of the space. Um, I'm walking away with the realization that a lot of thought has been put into it and it's a commendable job. I still do not have, and I think Ms. Tripp, Tipp stated it effectively, is as you walk on that space, how dominant are the spaces there? Does it change the feel of the town? Now, perhaps you can find, I mean, the clearest way I see it is if this is Susan Lawrence, right? As opposed to Sarah Lawrence, Susan Lawrence, it's twice as tall. And so how does that feel? That being said, I think one of the speakers actually commented very specifically about the points in development. There's a lot of thought here, and it is replacing something that is in the ice rink. To the point of spot zoning versus full-scale zoning, we tried full-scale zoning, and we don't wanna be there. This is well-thought-out, I just don't know how that's gonna feel.
Thank you. Um, we are gonna have you guys do a simulation from south to north, but one thing that might be helpful is, it was easy for us because we're sitting here with this model here to see that, but somebody looking at it on the computer, um, it'll it'll go faster on the computer, but if there are ways to kind of label the buildings so we know they're coming down the hill and they're making a left at the light and there's, or a right at the light, and, uh, you know, you can label Susan Lawrence so people can at least orient themselves as to what they're seeing, I think that would be helpful, too. Uh, is there anyone else, if anyone else would like to speak, please?
I I'm sorry, I came in late.
No, no, that's okay.
I'll give you the card in a minute, it's Suzanne Chason, I literally wrote my comments.
Oh, sure.
So I'm really married.
Oh, that's okay. Um, but hang on before you speak, if you do wanna speak, please, the, uh, the cards are in the back.
Yeah.
You can take an extra one if you wanna write your notes on it, um, but write your, uh, name and address on them and we will take them. And if you are online wanting to speak after we get, uh, through everyone in person, we will certainly turn it over, uh, to to those virtual comments. Okay, Suzanne.
Um, Suzanne Chason, I live in town, Chappaqua. Um, and I just, I I think some of the comments made here tonight were very helpful. I think some of the points made were really, really strong, and I do think that there's some important things to think about. I really do think one of the questions about the narrowness of the road is an excellent point. I also think it's not just about Seaback and about the road when it's done, but I also think we have to consider that this building is taking up the entire lot. Where are you gonna put the cranes, where are you gonna put the construction materials? Where are you gonna live with this process for a long time? I mean, I do think this is too overwhelming a a building for this state, this part. And contrary to what some of the people feel, I think the sameness of it is part of the problem. I think the lack of variety, the lack of different roof lines, all of that is exactly opposite of what a small town feels like. Could be that I'm old-fashioned, but I do think that this just doesn't feel like the rest of the town and will be quite jarring when you go down. And I know we're gonna, you guys are gonna redo that, so I think that's that's really good. Um, one of the points was made about, uh, how, you know, there was this, um, parking is no longer accessible currently, but once we get this building, parking will never be accessible again. Those fifty spots that are currently there are zoned in the business retail parking district, currently were meant to be used by any shopper in the town and any business, will now be gone. Um, also, we're talking about a property that under the old code would have sixty-six parking spaces, now we're gonna have forty-nine. That's not just going to be a problem for people who are suddenly getting these luxury apartments, paying probably more than five thousand a month for them and only being able to use one car, and yes, they could go to the train station, they're gonna have to pay for that, for that extra parking. Um, but we're also talking about where the rest of us can park when we go into town, where are the businesses going to cut their shoppers from? Because when I go into town now, I park across from Susan Lawrence, I park in that lot, and I do all my shopping around there, and I go all around, and then I come back. Where am I gonna go once we start having people who don't even have enough parking spaces? And and if we do the retail on the first floor, which I hope we do, I I understand the gentleman's concerns, but I really wouldn't wanna see it be all residential, I think that would be a mistake. But if we do the retail, but we don't have enough parking, we're gonna get another retail store that doesn't really draw people in. And then the biggest thing is, I know we talk about the walkability, but the fact is, we have to understand that Chappaqua or Newcastle is three distinct hamlets. It's Millwood, it's Chappaqua Hamlet, and it's Chappaqua Crossing. None of those are accessible except by car from each other. So yes, I live in the downtown and I walk to my train. How am I gonna go to the grocery store? How am I gonna get my kids somewhere? How am I gonna go to an an event somewhere else? How am I gonna go to the chat, to the Chappaqua Theater to see husband? How am I gonna go to Millwood to see a ballgame? How am I gonna go to these places? I'm gonna go one way, I'm gonna get a car and drive. So I'm not saying that's the best way in the world, I'm just saying that's the realities, and we have to consider that. So I'm saying I'm all for a project there, I'm all for mixed-use residential. I think this project, the way it is, needs to be scaled back. I think it needs to be smaller, it needs to have better parking, it maybe needs to have a setback on the top, it needs to have a more feel for the community, and I would like to see a little variation in the in the size. I think it has a kind of massiveness by being all the same. So that's kind of what I wanted to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Suzanne. That was annoying. Um, next we have Karen Anton.
Um, well, to begin with, I've lived here for thirty-seven years, and the town's changed a lot. And yes, definitely something has to be done with the Rite Aid situation and the parking lot. But I do believe, and I'll be honest, I mean, my personal opinion, my aesthetic, it looks like this thing landed from somewhere. That's kind of how I feel, because it doesn't match the aesthetic at all of our town. And with all due respect, very talented architects, I appreciate all of them, but it's interesting to note that the projects that have been pointed out are all in cities, Portland, New Haven, nothing in a small town such as Chappaqua, so that concerns me. Um, in addition, I have a lot of questions, besides the fact why this couldn't go through a special permit analysis, basically respecting the the aesthetic, uh, the building height of surrounding buildings and all of that. More specifically, I have questions about the green roof. What happens if it snows? There's no, um, discreet, there's no projection of what solar panels would look like on the green roof, which would be unbelievable if they shine up to the surrounding area. That will actually, um, destroy the green underneath because the grass cannot live under solar panels or whatever could be underneath. So those things really concern me. Um, so I'm hoping the town will really look at this and say, hey, we do want something, there are a lot of good intentions here, could we have an alternate design or something a little bit more traditional? Um, and I think the parking, it would be nice perhaps if it were scaled back, so maybe there's outside parking, so there's not the constraints of the fifteen feet and the twenty-four feet and all of that. And I think I agree with everything that Suzanne said, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, we have Chuck Napoli.
I I only have ten words. Um, quiet, compatible, sleepy, green, serene, authentic, uncongested, quiet, treasy, which means more green, um, welcoming, intimate, and friendly. I think I'm missing one, oh, peaceful. That's the feeling that I would give an architect when I was asking him to do something in my town. And I would hope with all the skill and all the intelligence that they could use the construction techniques that we're using and the program that we're using, and to make, to make it feel more compatible to what our community needs. These words are not mine. We've collected these words over the years from the people in town who wanted to look and feel. I had a lot about feel and a lot of look, and I think, I think you gotta start with 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 the context that you're you're working in. And professors or teachers or critics or whatever, um, this doesn't sit in the back and it sits in the middle of our town.
Thanks, Chuck. Right, next is Warren Gottlieb. Again, while Warren's coming up, if you have any comments, please, uh, fill out a note card and hand it to Jill with her name and address.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I just, uh, wanted to give you my thoughts as an eighteen-year resident who was outspoken in opposition to the misguided policy known as the Form-based Code. I also just wanna say at the outset also, it is clear to me that a lot of fault was given to this, um, project, and, um, I think it has some comments tonight, but I don't want you to think I don't appreciate that, I just think that there's still some work to do, okay. Um, I wanted just to address the town board and, uh, say that I appreciate the opportunity for public comment on this proposed rezoning in a format that resembles genuine public engagement, regardless of viewpoint. This is an indispensable component of good government, and I sincerely hope that this framework endures going forward regardless of who sits on the town board. When every voice is heard and considered and treated with genuine respect as they have been this evening, I believe the town board is better able to make policy decisions than truly take into account the collective wisdom of this wonderful community. That posture was missing a few years ago, and I'm glad to see that it has been restored. Public hearings and open dialogue are essential ingredients in making sound decisions. What I think we have in our hands is a difficult situation. Uh, the current circumstance, no doubt, presents a significant challenge, and it's been recognized several times tonight. On the one hand, there is a private landowner, uh, who seeks to get the highest, best use of the property at fifty North Greeley, and they have every right to seek this, and I don't harbor any ill will towards them for doing so. That's how a capitalist system works, and I support that. On the other hand, there is the recol gem that is our downtown hamlet, something which, uh, other private landowners, myself and my friends and neighbors, wish to preserve, all in accordance with, uh, the goals of the comprehensive plan. And, um, every, uh, our residents, um, similar to other private landowners, uh, have, uh, the right to seek this goal, and I believe, uh, that the Feinberg family, I do believe, inherently recognizes this, and I appreciate, uh, their efforts. Uh, there still seems to be a gap, and I believe, um, some of that gap has been expressed in this room, I think you're gonna hear a lot more of it from the community, but each side, I think, has to face some reality. To my friends and neighbors, we have to realize that something is going to come and has to come to fifty North Greeley, and, uh, yes, the town board can refrain from making zoning changes that permit what is currently proposed. However, there has to be some realization, something's gonna happen. To the Feinberg family, I would say this, you have to realize that you own a piece of property that is right in the heart of one of the most treasured towns in America. A town populated with people who moved here for its unique quaintness that conflicts with simply seeking the highest, best use at fifty North Greeley. I'm not suggesting that's what you're doing, but just understand that that's the mindset that people come from. It's not that there's an anti-development attitude. The resistance that you sometimes see is the strength of our residents' love for our town. And we are mindful of how easy it is to take a lovely village like Chappaqua, make a couple mistakes of one board and one year, and destroy our small charming village character that ten generations of Chappaqua residents have worked so hard to preserve. Those are someone else's words named Mark Frye. We have near examples of this, Pleasantville is one of them, and we're all very mindful of that, and we don't wanna wake up one day and see a mistake like that. I'm not suggesting that your intention is to do that, I'm saying I think there's gonna need to be some more work here. So for this reason, I I'm really here just to encourage collaboration. Uh, there are a lot of really smart people in this town, there are a lot of really smart people in our town board, uh, and who serve the town in various capacities, including our planning board. Uh, Chuck Napoli, who spoke tonight, is a town treasurer. He he's, uh, proposed something that he's put out publicly. Uh, is that the endpoint to this? I'm not saying that, but it's certainly a starting point for a conversation, and I really think that, um, this is the type of town where I think we're gonna get a lot further towards a better solution faster if those types of efforts are embraced a bit more. Uh, and I really hope that you take that to heart, because I think everybody wants to see a solution quickly, but done the right way. And finally, since, uh, wouldn't be any fun coming up here without any comments whatsoever, I'll give you four quick ones. Uh, my four quick ones are the following. Uh, I do note that the planning board has some pretty big reservations, so let's not leapfrog around them. So, let's not leapfrog around them. Uh, I've seen both of their memos, and they seem to be summed up as slowdown. We're not convinced that this is entirely right. So, I know there's legislation, um, but I really think that before anything's passed, they have to weigh in on this. There's a lot going on. Uh, the second thing I'm concerned about, and I've expressed this to some of you, uh, I, I, I would like to see an independent legal opinion come from somebody that was not part of the Form Based Co-, Form Based Code process and that does not currently represent the developer's interest, uh, opine as to whether or not the type of spot zoning that is proposed uh, in this legislation will in any way, uh, shape or form, even a hair enhance the ability of adjacent landowners to come in and have a better probability of success with respect to variance requests than they do now. Because I don't want to see this become a Trojan horse for, uh, the type of runaway development that we started with the Form Based Code. My third, uh, comment is parking, parking, parking. Um, I still think that's a big issue. And, uh, the last one is, uh, look, I support affordable housing. I support diverse housing. I, I, you know, uh, if I downsized in this town, I'm not gonna do it with a six thousand dollar a month apartment. I mean, my, you know, most of the people in this town, uh, have mortgages set at below three percent. So, who is this for? And it's not, when that's one of the goals of the comprehensive plan, to keep people in town. I just don't see that happening here. So, that's something to think about as well. Um, but again, I am really here, uh, to encourage compromise. So, I hope you take it to heart. I think you'll find things go a lot, um, faster and cheaper as a result that I think the Feinberg family will be happy about the town alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have, uh, Margaret Ferguson.
Good evening. Um, I have two comments, but I do want to pick up on something Warren just said, which is with collaboration, with conversation, with real engagement from many stakeholders, you will get a better, widely supported, sustainable result. And I suggest that whatever goes on this lot, you better be willing to have it appear on other lots. Because yes, I think this creates a high risk of other people seeking to push the envelope through the ZBA or the courts or future town boards to do exactly the same thing that appears on Fifty North Greeley. So, to provide a balance for our future, what goes there, you better be willing to accept it appearing somewhere else. I have two comments. Well, they're related. You have a momentous decision because this legislation is drafted as basically an end run around the two thousand and seventeen COM Plan. And what do I mean by that? It says, "The scale, massing and character of a proposed project shall be consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan relative to the area in which the NG zero project site is located." So, it's setting a definition that what's set forward in this plan, the height, the massing, the lack of parking, everything, is a new standard. And the new standard is an end run around the two thousand and seventeen COM Plan. That plan, respectfully, is bigger than all of you. It's bigger than any town board. It's supposed to provide continuity. It's supposed to provide predictability. It's supposed, supposed to provide standards, um, to keep our small town small. But move forward. It can be done. That COM Plan has been lauded as an excellent example of a COM Plan. But this language, to me, is a fallacy. What I see here is not, uh, does not, is not consistent with the goals of COM Plan, namely, the first goal, which says the, everything is supposed to be in a scale and density of the as-built environment and all the neighborhoods. I'm paraphrasing here because I have it on my phone. Um, you can see, whatever, whatever glossy presentation they made, we can all stand there and imagine, uh, the height of this building is gonna dwarf everything around it. It is not compr- uh, is not consistent with the as-built environment. And then number two, under New York State law, if you approve the special permit, it's, it is tantamount to you saying that the building built in accordance with that special permit does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Does not adversely affect the neighborhood. That's what New York State law sets in seven, seven twenty-five B, approval of special use permits says. So, basically, you're saying that as long as the project meets the conditions of the law that says it's in line with the COM Plan, and I disagree with that, that it does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Well, if a developer for another lot in the area wants to go to the ZBA, one of the things they look at is whether the proposed project adversely affects the neighborhood. And this special use permit is saying, what's built in accordance with your law does not adversely affect the neighborhood. You're doing the hard work for developers to go down the road, uh, come down the road later on and want to build the same thing. So, I agree with Warren's request for an opinion that there's no risk created by this law. I think that's, um, a real concern. And I really think that this board has to think that this is a, a character-changing, a community-changing law. And you, uh, what you do today, you'll all be gone from here in a few years probably. It'll be another town board. What you do today, they could do spots on it. You know, we could see sixty feet. Um, where's it gonna stop? The COM Plan should control. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have no more cards. Oh, wait. No, I know, I will. One more card. Rob? Don't go, you're the next.
Start the three minutes.
You have to get elected, you know?
I have more question, I have more. That's small. I have more questions than, uh, Rob Fleischer, Idiot Kill Ruin, Chappaqua, New York. I have more questions than I have comments. Uh, before, uh, Ally asked about how IH four was and if the answer was ten feet. So, is that the ceiling height inside the, what is the ceiling height? What's the ceiling height?
It varies, but, uh, roughly ninety.
Ninety feet? So, if you go from fifteen, ten, 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 that's forty-five, how do you get to the, what if the last five is just the roof? Okay. At one point in time, I seen one of the documents fifty-five. So, is the height fifty-five or is it fifty?
It, it varies. Uh, the average is fifty.
Okay. Let's go to five again. Okay, so it's fifty.
There's also, I think you came in after, there was actually a slide where they showed this, and we're gonna have that on our website too.
Okay. Um, the parking lot. Just so I understand, because I've gotten different feedback on this as well. Is the ride aid parking lot as it, as it is now part of the downtown parking district where people have a right to use it? And what is the legal situation with that?
I do not believe it is, but it's not. Private property is not part of the parking.
Okay, because people seem to believe that it's the opposite, that it's part of, that it's no different than the, the parking lot across the street. Okay. Wanted to make sure it was clear because there's a lot of miscommunication or misunderstanding about that. Um, I found the alternative to the block model, you know, the idea that you had just a, without the four buil-, the four building breakup and lowered it all up and lowered it down, that would probably be pretty close to three stories to be really unattractive. So, that, you know, and I believe it does look, it is broken up a lot. One of the things that breaks it up a lot are these, uh, the gardens in between. And one of the questions I had was, how do we get a guarantee of maintenance of those green spaces? Uh, get ongoing covenants, make sure there's some sort of bond to make sure that happens. Because if you lose the greenness, I think this has a whole different look, um, as a building. So, that to me is, is, is pretty important. And for the roofs as well, to maintain something. Uh, just, I don't know exactly how that's done or what, what's legal to do, but making sure you get covenants and from a critical lead party could just be important as part of that. I'd like to understand at some point how, right, how all these planning board suggestions are gonna be incorporated here. I think one of the things that was important to me, just part of different discussions, was making sure we continue to involve our planning board and our architectural review board as part of the process. Um, people talk a lot about spot zoning here. Um, seems like there's, you mentioned there were eighteen or nineteen different spot zones in our town.
Special apartments, not spot zones.
Special zones, special apartments. And, um, I guess, to me, I'm not quite sure, and maybe there's a, a clear, a clear answer, and then the evidence is for you kind of. Um, is that what difference is the precedent that this might set as opposed to the different, the precedent that the Confer building set? Which was, which wasn't this kind of interactive in terms of what, what it, in terms of legal precedent, that, that's a, I think, like a forty-eight story, fifty, fifty, fifty-foot, uh, building? That's a pretty big building.
And a lot of things that have been thrown around tonight, spot zoning and variances and zone changes, and a lot of it's gotten mashed up.
There was a sea, sea of law special.
A lot of it's gotten mashed up. And, and I can tell you that the town board has asked those questions. It's gotten legal opinions.
Okay.
And we're here.
Okay. So, I'm not sure if that means that, if that could be shared with people as part of this process, I think it'd be good help to understand. Because that's just, I'm sure there are others that I'm less familiar with, but obviously, pretty familiar with that one. And it's, and I understand the concern because I don't want to see buildings of this size all around the town. That's why I was against the Form Based Code. Um, I would rather see special permits to take use of certain lots that, that lend themselves to dense developments and that are underused currently as opposed to having, uh, an environmental view that says, you know, Old North Greeley is okay for four stories. That doesn't work for me. This to me is much more palatable. In terms of windows and materials, um, the placement of the windows, the types of materials, yeah, I'm not sure what le-, what type of flexibility there is. I'm hoping there is some flexibility so that when other people who are smarter than me, but were the, regardless, uh, that their opinions can be taken i- into the final concept because I, I can see how somebody looks at it and says, it does look a little harsh. And there's always ways to soften things. So, hopefully, those things, uh, are, are possible. Did they bring exam, uh, samples of the actual materials tonight with us?
We have previously, but, but not tonight.
Okay. In terms of single cars for each, there's one car for each residential unit. Will that be built to the lease?
A parking spot for a person.
That's a one parking spot, but not one car. You're not, you're not making representation as somebody who's living there, you're only gonna have one vehicle.
I can't control how many cars they own.
I don't, I don't know, can you? I don't know if you can make, make that sort of representation of being eligible to be there.
I can't control people.
I, I, I don't think we can control what people purchase. We can control the parking spots that are provided for those purchases.
So, it's illegal to mass and make a representation in the lease that I'm only gonna have one car that's registered in this town or, or this address? Okay? That creates more of a challenge. Um, are there other green roofs like this that we could, we can look, where would those be?
Um, they're all over, all over.
If it's possible to provide the town, is the risk of some, some other ones that exist like this?
New York City has a requirement for green. So, if you were to look at an aerial view of New York City, uh, it would be.
My guess, I, I won't be getting up in the air of New York City too soon, but.
Sure. Google Maps will do a great job.
Okay.
Yeah. And we can, and we can share precedence, so.
Right, right. That'd be good to have to, to the, to the town. Um, and that's all I have. And I also just want to repeat the idea that as collaborative, I think, as we can be, I think we'll get more buy-in. I think nobody will get everything they want, and people feel better about the process. And, you know, I wish us all the best of luck in getting to something because I want to see something happen here. I don't want to see nothing happen here. And that would be a great missed opportunity, which would be really regrettable. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, now Chuck, before we go back to people who've already spoken, I want to see if anyone online wants, um, um, is there anyone, uh, on Zoom participating who would like to speak? If you do, please raise your digital hand. Okay, Mr. Blackman.
Hi, uh, my name is Spencer Blackman. Um, I am a three-month Chappaqua resident. I just moved in, and this is my first town board meeting. And I'm very pleased to see how well this is going. I really love to hear the dialogue from everybody, how professional everybody is. Um, and I'm just very grateful to be in such a great town and welcomed by everybody that I've met.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. It's great to be here. Um, I just want to lend my support to this project. I think it sounds like a fantastic plan. I'm glad to see new people being welcomed into the community. I just want to lend my support to the, also the idea of increasing diversity and the number of affordable units in the building. I think that, that's something that the community could really use. That's really it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Uh, Chuck, would you like to come back up?
I just wanted to clear up about the parking district. This, this property is in the business retail parking district. And if it, if I, if, if the owner wanted to change the use a little bit or go to the planning board to, to add a penthouse or, well, if anything, if, if that use change from retail to, say, doctors office or what, whatever, whatever ever, ever happens is that when you go to the planning board in the parking district, the very, very first thing you're asked for is a, is a, um, is, is a definition of a, the parking area, uh, the meet sign now to the par- parking area, the, the libra number and everything of that parking that is then conveyed to the parking district for communal parking. So, whatever happens on that property, the minute that thing, um, gets altered, and it is getting altered right now by you, it, all other precedent in town says you have to make it be part of the parking district for parking to share. And obviously, we know, um, it's not, uh, sharing any parking whatsoever. Uh, and, and by the way, and the parking is, 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 if anybody goes in there and the space is a fool, you can't turn around and get hit anymore. But technically, there's no way out. Uh, but, but forget about the parking of what's planned. Um, it should be part of the community parking, which is not accessible by the community in the present form. And, 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 and as far as special uses are concerned, um, special uses are special, like churches, synagogues, hospitals, schools in neighborhoods that aren't zoned for it. Yes, you get a special use for a church or a school or a synagogue in a neighborhood. You're allowed that under special use permit. And, uh, this, this is not special. It's an apartment building.
Okay, thank you. Um, one, one minute. Uh, Sabrina, could you shed some light on the parking district versus non-parking district?
So, this property.
Just talking to the microphone.
It's not working.
Oh, okay.
But you, you can hear me, I'm sure.
Yeah, but they may not be able to hear you.
It's, it's the online, I can hear you.
So, this property is within the boundaries of the parking district. Historically, if a property has given excess land to the parking district as the code requires, when they come in for a change of use, we, we investigate whether or not they have given land and if they're taking advan-, because they want to take advantage of the parking district. In this instance, this property owner has never provided lands to the town to join the parking district. They maintain their own parking lot on their site. Um, they've never asked previously for the use on site to take advantage of the town's parking district, and the town has never asked them for property to add to the parking. and the town has never asked them for property to add to the parking district. There have been a couple of instances since I've been here, much of this has already been done year, you know, tens of years ago. There was one instance on, on South Greeley where they came in with a change of use and there was excess land and they wanted to use the parking district. They deeded that land to the parking district because that is the requirement of the code. It was excess land, not enough to park on because they wanted to park within the district. In this instance, I would bet it predates the town's parking district and they have never chosen to take advantage of the town's parking district. As part of the special use, the town board is contemplating legislation which has requirements for parking, but not saying that they have to allocate into the parking district at this time.
If I could just follow on that, uh, I, I think the key thing is that it's optional for a property owner to, uh, set aside a portion of its property and put it into the parking district, to dedicate it with a permanent easement for that purpose, optional. So as Sabrina explains, there have been occasions where to solve a problem, a property owner has opted to do that, but per the town code, it's a voluntary dedication, it's not required.
And Sabrina, for those who don't know, what is the parking district?
The parking district is located in the downtown in, in the Chapacua hamlet, which allows businesses to pay into the parking district, they get taxed for being in the parking district to let their commercial uses park in the various town lots surrounding the Chapacua hamlet.
So if a.
Correct, that is how they meet their parking requirement. And so we, I have asked for documentation on planning board applications when they come into the planning board, what that parking requirement would be so we can begin to track how much use compared to what the use is saying, what the parking requirement for the use is and how many cars they're anticipating in relation to the number of spaces. Because as a town, we've never kept track of it, so I'm trying to get a better handle as new use is coming.
Okay.
Within the parking district.
Potentially that this property never bought into the parking district is because they had sufficient parking for their commercial uses on their own private site and didn't need to utilize town parking.
Correct.
Exactly.
Okay.
Please, ma'am? If, if there's a reason why.
I don't think you had it.
Sorry.
Want to hand that over? Chuck.
Thank you, thank you. Let go.
So, so in, in, in every property in the downtown, every business property, um, um, business retail property, business, um, there's a certain amount of land you're allowed to build in. As a matter of fact, on South Greeley Avenue, you're only allowed to build seventy-five, five feet back from your front property line, even though your property is a hundred and seventy feet deep, so that left a hundred feet in the back of what you were allowed to build. Um, and, and so everybody was building in that seventy-foot setback, we got a little more something here, but, but there was always room in the back, there was always leftover space in the back for parking. And for people to cross over everybody's property, they had to get this easement, this, this, this joint easement where everybody was required to, by, I guess, if you wanted approval from the planning board, you got to give them the easement, it's that simple. I'm saying you have, um, you're going to give them an approval or you're going to give them a, you know, um, a zoning change, um, but you forgot about the parking part in the parking district. The minute that, that thing starts to change form from what it is now, the minute they use change, the second you even think about it, you have to begin to think about parking and limit the amount of building you can put on that property because it's in the park, now, you could change it, you could put it back into the business retail zone and, and, but it's in the parking district and you have to live by the rules of the parking district, I guess they're not really rules, but, but the precedent is every property owner in the parking district, building on that property, getting a permit, doing a zoning or plan, must have, um, shared parking. Some of that property has to be shared, period.
Is that true?
No.
Why?
Okay, this is something, we're certainly, I hear you, and we're gonna, I have all these notes, and we're gonna, we're gonna be looking into this as we evaluate the project.
Yeah, if we went to the planning board, guess what you'd have to do? You're in the parking district, you have to give parking, period.
All right, thank you. Um, is there anyone, just before we go back to more people, anyone who has not yet spoken who would like to speak? Ah, we have a hand online, okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Peterson, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to take this time to, uh, introduce myself, my name's Daniel Peterson, I live off Seven Bridges. Um, I moved in with my family a few years ago, I'm raising two kids here. I love being part of this community, being involved in ASO, being involved with the Titans on the weekend and really growing a great community of young families and getting to know all the established families here in Chapacua through the different pool, uh, groups that are a gym. But when I meet with other families through the weekend, two things always come up. Obviously, you all know, there are no sidewalks down here, it's very tough for me on Seven Bridges to be connected to downtown. So everything is driving and I hear the parking and I understand, so sidewalks are something that keeps coming up. But also, when I go to downtown, I don't, there's nothing really for me to do there, unless I really need to get a haircut, there's two options for some reason. And I really, really, uh, as a member of the community who speaks for many young families here, um, I think this, uh, proposal is a great first step in revitalizing downtown area, um, which needs a much-needed makeover. I heard someone earlier talk about Pleasantville and not wanting it to happen. Oh, almost every single family in the Chapacua area, when they go out during the weekend, they take their business and they go to Pleasantville or the other neighboring towns that have something to do. If it's not kids' sports, if it's not going to the playground, there's nothing to do downtown but get a haircut and go to Franny's. And I really strongly urge everyone on the town board and the individuals who seem to keep coming up to be against, uh, any development downtown, to start thinking through what will life in Chapacua be for my kids when they're teenagers? I don't want them going to Pleasantville, I don't want them going to Mount Disco. Five, ten minutes in a car of a teenager is not something, it, it matters a lot for a teenager driving. I want there to be a place downtown in Chapacua for my kids to go, want to go and spend time. And right now, that downtown area, it's not for, it's not really anything to do, so that's how I feel, thank you very much for your time. And I'll talk to you.
Um, good luck not being able to get your teenagers to drive though, I don't think you'll be able to stop them. But also, um, I appreciate your comments, I would also encourage, we're, we're going to be starting a, um, a public input prod, or public outreach prod, uh, process for, um, certain town-owned lands as well so that this input will be very helpful there as well, so just keep that in mind for the future. Thank you. Um, all right, is there anyone else online?
One of the hands are raised.
Okay, did you have another, Cynthia? And then Karen, I see you over there.
Hi, Ian, um, just a quick, it's just a question, so we're talking a lot about special use permits, but what, so, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not an attorney, so I don't really understand how this works. Does the special permit only apply to this piece of land? And if so, what happens when the one adjacent to it wants to, do they go through an entire process like this? Or they, can they later co-opt on to like, hey, there's this special use permit for Fifty North Greeley, how about, can we use that too? Like, that's, that's, I, what I don't understand, and I'm not asking it because I'm anti-development in any way, I'm asking it because I think that this is a question that people on many, many facets of this issue actually are asking right now.
It's a good question, we on the board have asked that question already, we know the answer, or I'm gonna let Ed explain it.
This, most special permits, uh, apply to more than one property, this one doesn't, this one would apply to a single property, Fifty North Greeley. Um, in terms of the property, I think.
Unless there was a property that met the exact same specifications within that permit.
Which are what?
Right now, the way the legislation is drafted, that's not possible.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um.
Size, there's a lot of.
But there's no other parcel in town other than this one that meets these specifications.
Right, so this, this legis.
It only applies to this one.
So, so you know what I'm asking, the, the adjacent property is the, what I'm really asking. They have to go through the whole, the exact same whole thing, and we, you have to hear all of us again.
Yes.
But I think, I think part of the.
They get to hear you all, yeah.
I think part of the question is, would that process be much easier because we've gone through this?
That is part of my question.
The, the answer is no, if, if we're talking about the parcel to the north, it's actually in a different zoning district, it's in the BR district. It actually has three stories, uh, as a matter of right, but it, uh, is not eligible for the special permit and this town board or future town board would have virtually unlimited discretion to say no to that property owner or to any other property owner that came in and, and said, I want one of those. The answer can be no.
Well, the answer could be none of this too. I mean.
Of course, that's why we're all here.
Right, so I don't see why, I don't see the differences, I guess, when.
I think the point is there is no difference, that the board will always have, uh, discretion with respect to making those legislative determinations on zoning.
Okay, but Ed, I think you know what keeps coming back to me is whether we have an obligation to exercise that discretion in an equitable way, so that if a property is as similarly situated as any other property could be and we just say no without a valid reason, without some important interest being met, wouldn't that be considered arbitrary?
If you're being asked to make a zoning change, you have absolute discretion to say, you don't even, under New York law, you don't even have to consider the request.
Is that right, without fear of litigation?
With respect to a zoning change, that is correct.
But not without fear of litigation?
Well, unfortunately, that's always.
Well, there's always a fear, I, I should say, um, I should say realistic, you know, I mean, there's always a fear of litigation.
That's not a question here.
We all live here.
But there's no current, uh, movement on that adjacent property at the moment.
Not that I'm aware of.
Sorry, I'm taking so much.
Thank you. Karen, did you, and then I see you.
I just have a quick question that re, was raised by Rob's question.
Just talking to the mic, so people at home can see.
I'm sorry, Rob, um, Fleischer raised, I thought, a very interesting point. And unfortunately, I think it, it can't be answered the way this, uh, project has been presented because it's been presented as net zero carbon and a very crucial piece is that each car, each apartment is only going to have one parking space, but as was stated very clearly, you cannot limit people from having as many cars as they want. So again, it does raise the prospect of a lot of parking issues of people who could have more than one car. They could have five cars, where do they all go? I think that's really, um, troubling because I do believe that that is a major point of having this kind of building that really, I guess, the concept seems to be that the building is much larger than anything in town and it doesn't conform to any aesthetic or size or bulk. And I guess the compensation for that is the fact that it's green, rebuilding, net zero, all of that. But I think there needs to be more of a balance, and the other thing I would ask is that green building concept is, you know, more, it could be many different things, I do understand there are many different certifications that third parties that control that, I would assume if we get to that point, that would be in the legislation. I know certain bonds sometimes have to be posted for certain types of green building to make sure it's done properly. Um, and the last thing is in terms of green roofs, and years ago, I was in a project where the green roofs were promoted for New York City because of the rain issues, you know, trying to deal with stormwater runoff. But those are like penthouse, I mean, these are very tall buildings, as Rob said. So I think the point is, unless you're in a helicopter, you're not going to see what they look like if there's snow, there's dieback, there are solar panels killing whatever underneath, or everything dies because our climate is changing so much, we don't really know what's going to survive. So I think those are really, you know, difficult questions to answer, and I respect all of the great work you've done and obviously you're very well-bursted in this, but there's still questions in our little town because we're not New Haven, we're not Portland, we're not California, we're here in Chapacua that we, I don't see anyone else with a green roof around, I mean, I'd love to see one. The last thing I'll say in terms of Pleasantville, Pleasantville's a lovely town, great, you know, great theater, but I think what was meant was now buildings can be put up, one which has issues because nothing was followed the way, it didn't end up the way it was supposed to be supposedly. The other one looks like we're in SoHo, and I don't know if people want to change the character that much. We do need to have, um, mixed use, we need diversity, we need apartments, we need a revitalization of certain parts of Greeley, but I think we need to think about it a lot more, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, and again, these are all questions, we're writing them, we're writing all these questions, now we're going to get answers to everything. Warren.
I would just say this with respect to, uh, Enema, I take Ed's word with respect to legal analysis. I just would, then ask that tomorrow or by the end of the week or within the next week or two, produce a legal opinion on Canadian Letterhead that says that there is no increased likelihood that the town is going to have to defend variance applications due to the passage of this. Just give the authorities a one, if you don't want to be in that position, which I can understand, then get an independent firm to do it and publish it, put it on the town website, it doesn't need to be a secret.
Oh, we've done it already, where, where is it? It's not published on the town website, it's something that we've talked.
I wouldn't know about it if it wasn't, I would like to read.
Of course, it's privileged, but it's, it is something.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking you.
It is something that the board has asked about, that we've opined on, we've written on, they're very familiar with the issues.
Okay, if there was a way that that opinion could be made public, I think that would be very helpful, and it would give me comfort, that's what a opinion letter is for, right?
All right, thank you, Warren.
Do you think it's just, sure, come on up. I, I'm no expert on green roofs, but, um, one of the things I, when I've looked at green roofs, they've always been kind of flat. This thing is like all over the board, and I'm just curious, what's the percentage of green roofs that fail? Because my suspicion is a lot, and I wanted to just say again what Rob Fleischer said about a covenant, I, I strongly second that, that I think that there needs to be an absolute guarantee that green roof's going to be there, that it's going to be there ten years from now, or if it's not, there's a new one, because I, I really think, and the green, the rest of the green, that, that, that the building is, is so much being sold on this and we don't really have any, any kind of way to, to judge that or to know it. And especially with an unusual roof line, that seems like, you know, if I was trying to build something in topography, something that has more angles is going to have a lot more dieback in certain areas, so that's something I guess want to say, thanks.
Thank you, and I definitely wrote that down, we're going to delve into the green roofs and, and I think you, you let us know that you're going to give us examples of some that we can actually go see and we can publish on the website and everyone can feel free to take a road trip. Um, all right, so I think, is there anyone else online? Okay. So I think we are going to close the public hearing for this evening, um, and, yeah, yes. I would, I would, uh, suggest that we adjourn this public hearing, uh, until May twenty-third. I know we have a few other public hearings that day, but I.
Right, do you, um, do you, because you have a laundry list of topics, might you want to put it off a little bit longer so that you can get them answered? It's supposed to be two weeks.
Well, I think that the, these probably can work simultaneously, right, we may get more. We may get more questions at the next public hearing that we're also gonna want answered, so I don't know that we're gonna be able to have all those questions answered right away. But I think this could give us a good step toward that, and we can certainly, uh, work on parallel paths.
Great.
All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing until, uh, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM, or at such time as the town board gets to it on the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and in the meantime, if anyone has written comments you would like to submit, those will be part of the public record as well.
If I may, before we leave this, um, there was some discussion about, the working group met back in February, and there has been some discussion about getting them back together and also expanding their ranks.
Yes.
Um, does the board want to take that up now?
Yes, so, um, for those who don't know, we, we did form, and Ed alluded to it earlier, we did form a working group of two members of the town board, two members of the planning board, uh, as a smaller group to kind of hash out some of these issues as well. And we're proposing now actually adding two members of our architecture review board, board of architectural review, um, to that as well. So I think that's what you're alluding to, and, and I do think we should do that. Do we have that resolution?
We, we got it since, maybe we have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so does someone want to read that?
Do we have it up? I don't have it up yet, do you have it, Jeremy?
Um, I-
It's from Lori Casco.
As soon as I have it, yeah.
Got it?
All right, uh, I move to authorize appointment of Robert Schenkel and Stanley Wong to working with Fifty North Greeley special permit legislation, and therefore, making the resolution for establishment to allow for a total of six members.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, I want to just thank the public, you all were so respectful tonight, and there were differences in opinions, but I love the way we were able to kind of collaborate and respectfully discuss all this, and it's, it's so important. And as I've said for the last decade, you know, I think diversity of opinion is what makes our town so special, and the fact that we can incorporate it and then have this discussion is really wonderful, so I want to thank you all. And to be continued. All right, so we are going to move, all of you are, you don't have to leave us, but you can if you want to. Uh, we are actually gonna move right to, uh, our consent agenda items. Uh, was there anyone before we got there? Thank you, and we'll, we'll be in touch.
Are we going to leave that outside?
Oh, oh, and we're gonna, are we leaving this?
Do you have a topic?
Okay, well, we're, you know what? If, if you guys can stick around for a few minutes, we, we will be very, we don't have much left. We just have two resolutions.
All right, we'll start.
Okay. All right, so why don't, did anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda items? Okay, so let's start with the resolutions, Holly?
I move to adopt the consent agenda consisting of the following as illustrated in the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
I-
Aye.
I always get the claims. Um, I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of four million one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, listed in the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail report. Both dated May eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Checks will be issued and mailed each claimant listed on Wednesday, May tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the resignation of Vincent Fullspring, position of motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works Recycling Unit effective May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize posting and hiring for the position of motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works Recycling Unit at the annual salary ranging from fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents to eighty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the promotion of Justin Gould to the provisional position of water maintenance worker grade two within the Department of Public Works Water Unit at the annual salary of eighty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents, effective May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This provisional appointment is subject to being successfully reached on the civil service exam established list, and is subject to a fifty-two week probationary period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the promotion of Michael Love to the provisional position of water maintenance worker grade two within the Department of Public Works Water Unit at the annual salary of sixty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, effective May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This provisional appointment is subject to being successfully reached on the civil service exam established list, and is subject to a fifty-two week probationary period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the promotion of Mark Nider to the provisional position of water maintenance worker grade two within the Department of Public Works Water Unit at the annual salary of seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-eight cents, effective May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This provisional appointment is subject to being successfully reached on the civil service exam established list, and is subject to a fifty-two week probationary period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I move to authorize the hiring of, uh, following individuals to the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department to serve as camp staff for the twenty-twenty-three season at the corresponding hourly rates ranging from eleven dollars to forty dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, as further detailed in the resolutions agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, was there anything else?
That's it.
So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.